Okay. Let's switch gears here. Okay, welcome to our board meeting. It's a long day today. We've had lots of meetings already and two more to go. So, thank you for being here. We appreciate you coming, especially on such a beautiful day outdoors. So, we have some special guests with us tonight. And you may have seen them up here with us, with the board on the stand. And we appreciate them being here. These are our Leighton High School student body officers. And we have Mr. Keno Young and Ms. Ava Kindred. And we want to say welcome. We're so excited to have you with us tonight. And your great principal, Mr. Jackman. And excited to have you up here with us. Appreciate you. As the night goes on, please feel free to give your input. We'd love to hear from you. And you will be given an opportunity to share some of the great things going on at Leighton High School. So, and next, we're gonna have our Pledge of Allegiance. And Mr. Keno Young is going to lead us in that.
Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're also very excited to welcome Northridge High School band here. You may have seen them out there getting ready to come in. Very happy to have them with us. And Ms. Shanda Stinger is going to introduce them.
President Gerard, Vice President Price, Board members and superintendency. We're really excited to have the Cardinal Jazz Combo from Northridge High here. They're going to be playing Take Five by Paul Desmond. And it's directed by Jared Harding. I know we've stacked Northridge a little bit. I pulled a data set this year of who's come in the last five years. And Northridge was not on the last five years. So, we've stacked them a little bit this year because I wanted to make sure we represented the work they've been doing. So, this is Northridge High Cardinal Jazz Combo.
Awesome. That was fantastic. And you know what you did for us? You gave us the energy to keep going and finish our last two meetings today. So, thank you so much. If I read your names, will you raise your hand so we can know who you are? So, Ben Andrigg on the drums. Yay, Ben. Simon Damitz on alto sax. Will Fairbanks on piano. Yeah. And Lucas Makaya on the bass. Yes. You guys were amazing. And I want to recognize Principal Jason Smith. I saw him come in. There he is on the back. Yep. And Jared Harding. There you are. Great job. Okay. Thank you so much for being with us. And we have a plaque that we're going to present to you. Superintendent Linford wants to say something else.
Hey, awesome, awesome. One of the best things we have. But I do think, and maybe the board could vote on this, but I didn't realize until tonight that we probably need a house band. Don't we? Like someone that's like a permanent fixture? These guys are up for it. Excellent, excellent.
Yeah. They help keep our energy up during our meetings. I would love that. Yeah. Thank you so much. Ms. Barber's going to come and present the plaque to you and Superintendent Linford. Do we have any parents? Do we have any parents? Yay for the parents. We know they don't do this alone. Okay, while they're getting ready, let's give a hand to... Do we just have one parent here? Do we have other parents? Okay. Thank you, parents. This takes a lot of practice. And in fact, we can take a picture with them and their plaque. And then, if the parents want to come up, we could take a picture with the parents, too. Awesome. Parents, would you like to come up and get a picture? You're okay? All right. Thank you so much. Thank you, Northridge. That was wonderful. We appreciate you being with us tonight. That was awesome. Really was. Thank you. As soon as these guys... I thought they might want to hang out with us the rest of the night, but it looks like they don't. Yeah, they might have homework. That might be more exciting. I don't know. Thanks again, guys. Okay. We've come to the portion of our meeting where we have public comment. And do we have the... There were some apparently that we're trying to get here in time for the public hearing, but they didn't make it. So, we're gonna add them to our public comment. And we did have one of the persons sign up for public comment. So, while we're finishing signing up on the roll back there, I'm going to read the public comment rules. And then, we'll have the public comment first and then our hearing people. So, at the start of every business meeting, we encourage and we welcome members of our community to give a public comment. We really truly love to hear from our public. And this is reserved for those who reside within Davis County or work in Davis School District. And this sign up is always available out there. And prior to the meeting, and you'll be called up one by one to speak. And the public comment period is not an opportunity to air complaints or, thank you, or comments about individual student education issues, bidding, contracts, or issues related to employment for which other avenues of communication exist. Derogatory comments about district employees or board members will not be allowed. We will treat everyone with dignity, respect, and kindness. And we ask that you do the same for us. And each speaker will be given two minutes to give their comment. And that will be timed, and you'll be given notice that your time is up. Just please know if you're giving a public comment, either in a board meeting or at our hearing, that we are listening intently and taking notes, and there will be follow-up. So, we'll go ahead and start with our public comment for our board meeting, and then we'll go with the two that wanted to talk about boundaries. So, Cynthia Minson. Where's Cynthia? Okay.
Hi. Good afternoon, President Gerard, Superintendent Linford, and members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today and share a glimpse into my classroom. My name is Cynthia Minson, and I teach first grade at Lincoln Elementary. Behaviors at our school are difficult and escalating, but I feel that working where the needs are the greatest is where I can make the most impact. Many of my students are seeking structure, support, and hope. For them, learning Spanish is not an academic plus. It's a lifeline. It connects them to their families, their roots, and gives them a sense of belonging, comfort, and empowerment. Teaching them a second language isn't just about opportunity. It's about equipping them with the tools to navigate life with dignity and confidence. Do you want to see equality and belonging in action? Please step into my classroom. For many students, it's the one place where they truly feel seen. Here, roles shift. Leaders listen, and quiet voices find strength. They discover that they need one another, and they grow together. They develop a sense of empathy and perspective. The same is true for their families. In my classroom, I also strive to create a student-led environment. For the past five years, I've worked hard to create what I call centers of growth. Student-driven spaces where students play at learning. They know what they still need to learn, so they choose where to work, what to work on, who to work with, and how to learn it. These centers have become my students' favorite part of the day. And they feel safe with endless opportunities to learn and relearn, make mistakes, and grow. They even choose to struggle. Here is where metacognition starts to happen. Every day, I see my students take pride in their progress, strength in their identity, and hope for their futures. So, thank you so much for supporting our language immersion programs and providing for opportunities for teachers to learn about student-led classrooms. Many of my students already face significant disadvantages, and these opportunities may be what leaves them from poverty and hopelessness. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Minson. Okay, we have Barbara Packer. Hi.
I'd like to even piggyback on that a little bit. I think we have a misunderstanding just in general. A lot of people don't realize what it is to speak a second language. And we have some of our Spanish-speaking kids that get treated as if they know less when knowing the second language is like high-level calculus types. So, yeah, one of the things that does concern me, I have seen a lot of good in the community and the schools, and they are very connected. The community listens to us, and we listen to them. But one thing that has, like, now that we don't have to be under the direction of the DOJ anymore, some of the problems are still there. We still see them. We still have people that like moved out of our area because of the way they were treated even recently. So, I hope that we can, now that it's not being forced, I hope that like get the bluff call, that we can still be more sensitive to that. We even had some students that were Polynesian that they were saying, oh, they were discriminated against, and then come to find out it was because somebody thought they were black. And we need to be careful that we are not reinforcing that that would be an insult. Like, obviously, the N-word is an insult. But if your child comes home from school and they're not black and they were called the N-word, is your first inclination to try to convince them that, oh, don't worry, you're not black? Or do we address the real issue that there is racism amongst their classmates and stuff? And so, I hope that we are being a little more sensitive still to that. I think it's... We still kind of miss that. Empathy is listening to other people. And I also, there was Caseville City meeting, but school parents were there. And one of them said, "It will be a cold day in hell before we have a warming center by our students." The last one, we did see some students from one of those centers that succeeded.
Thank you. Thank you. Karice Thompson?
Hello, school board. Thank you very much for having me. My name is Karice Thompson. I'm the outreach specialist for the Utah Office of State Treasurer, specifically Treasurer Marla Oakes. The reason why I'm here before you today is just to inform you all about the Financial Education Hall of Fame. It's a contest that the treasurer's office has been hosting. It's now our second year hosting this contest, and we're just looking for nominations. We know that in this district, there are great teachers teaching financial literacy. And in the six categories that we have, four of them have monetary prizes to them. The top category, I'll just read for a second, is the Utah Personal Finance Educator of the Year. Honoring a Utah educator who has demonstrated excellence in dedication and innovation in teaching personal finance. There's a traveling trophy that will come to the school along with a $500 prize for that teacher. Last year, I was able to actually gain a donation from the Salt Lake City Beach for that teacher. It was an elementary teacher way up north who won that prize. And he got to go to a baseball game, and we recognized him at our conference, or not our conference, at our banquet at the Thanksgiving point. With that being said, please, if you guys know any teachers who are doing great things in this space, we want to recognize them. And as someone who does live in Davis County and in the boundaries, I'm in Clearfield. I'm also elected official, too. I'm Clearfield City Councilmember Thompson. I know the world you guys live in. I trust me. I just want to thank you for your service, and hopefully, you guys nominate some good teachers so we can have them compete. The nominations close on May 2nd, so that's just why I'm here today.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Afterwards, would you get with someone over at this table so we can get your contact information if we have nominations? Okay. Okay. Thank you, Dr. Toome. Okay. Thank you so much for your public comments. We appreciate you being here. So, okay. Well, let's get started with our meeting more. And we have some board recognition. And excited to have Davis High School VEX Robotics state champions. And Ms. Chadley Bodily is going to talk to us about them.
Yes, I'm excited to be with you today. So, thanks for having me, President Gerard, Vice President Price, and superintendent and board. I get to be here today to introduce Dr. Lori Hawthorne, who will be introducing her VEX Robotics team. Typically, we do a lot of these things for athletes in sports, and these guys are athletes in a whole different way. They do a lot... Oh, here's Dr. Hawthorne. So, I'm gonna turn it over to her because she's so eloquent, and will do a much better job than me.
I won't, but thank you. Board members, thank you so much for this opportunity. We know the wealth of talent in our school alone, not to mention in the school district. And every single principal could stand up in front of you for like, and filibuster for many, many hours about the good things going on in our schools. And so, thank you so much for all of the support and opportunities that you give us. I am delighted today to talk about our VEX Robotics team. And they're gonna go ahead and just start running some demonstrations up here while I talk. But this group of... This team alone at Davis High just won their 13th straight state championship. Say that 10 times fast.
Yeah.
And even more impressive, we have some seniors on this team that just won their third straight state championship. So, we're so proud of them and what an incredible achievement. Not only are they incredible competitors and highly intelligent people, this group of students that are going to the world competition in Dallas in a few weeks will actually miss their AP tests. So, they will come home after an exhausting week of competition and take makeup AP tests because they're absolutely incredible. And so, now, I'm gonna introduce Dane Laufson, who is the conductor, the mentor, the coordinator, the engineer of chaos for this group, who has led them to all of their state championships.
It is an absolute honor to be able to come and talk about what these amazing kids do. And quickly, I want to explain what the game is we play because it's not just driving robots around and picking up rings on a floor. These guys compete on a 12-foot-by-12-foot field. These robots are required to start inside of a capacity of 18 by 18 by 18 inches. They can then expand out of that during the match. A match consists of four teams. You can't control who you're with. You can't control who you're against in the qualification rounds. What they then do is they go out, they compete to the very best of their ability. They go out, they're trying to score. This is not battle bots. We do not have the funding to destroy these robots. We... They are going out. They have to be able to interact with each other. They do slam into each other. There is some aggressive gameplay, but they're not trying to hurt each other in this process. They go out, they're trying to score points, they're scoring things. They win the match by scoring. These robots score points by picking up these goals, by scoring rings on them. There's other goals around the field. There's a tower that they can climb and hang off of at the end of the match. They spend the first 15 seconds in autonomous. So, the first 15 seconds was, are honestly, the most crucial 15 seconds of the match, are completely autonomous. There's no driver control. So, Danielle and Taylor, stop driving for just one second. That sound, I'm sorry, I don't hear that anymore because that is all I hear all day long and on my weekends and everything. So, during that first 15 seconds, they don't have control of their robots. Their robots have to preperform a task that is preprogrammed into it in conjunction with their teammate, who they don't know who that will be until they get to the tournament for the day. Then, they get to go on, depending on how they do at their... In the qualification rounds, they get to team up with a team that they want to work with for the rest of the day and for the elimination round. And then, that's how they go through and they win a tournament. Davis High this year has competed at 11 tournaments. I don't remember how many we've won. It all honestly gets muddled over a little bit of time. But we have won this year for our 13th consecutive season, the state championship. But in that, there's a little bit of disparity because there's two teams that win the state championship. So, at the same time, Davis High has won the state championship for 13 consecutive years, but we have had 21 teams win the state championship. So, many of those times, there were two Davis High teams teamed up together, winning the state championship. And we have made a lot of people dislike us because of that. Because of that, because of the number of tournaments that they go to, these students don't just learn how to work on robots. They learn the process of iteration. How many of you have failed? How many of you have overcome that failure? Every hand, please be up. These kids learn amazing things. They learn failure. They learn to overcome that failure. They learn teamwork. The team that is working with you now could be your opponent later today. The team that is your opponent now could be your teammate later today. You're... The team that you are, you just want to crush them this week, they're your best friend, and they're your teammate for the elimination round next week. So, these kids don't just have to compete with people. They have to beat people that they like and then be happy when they lose. It's an amazing dynamic that really teaches these kids what the future is going to hold for them and that they can do it, they can compete, and they can succeed. I have kids all over the world. It feels like I have kids that have gone to all sorts of schools, all sorts of places. I have kids that have gone into robotics and automation. Imagine that. I have mechanical engineers, computer scientists, electrical engineers, theoretical computer science. Apparently, that's a degree. I have another weird kid that's in pathology. Helicopter pilots, human resources, aviation tech, physics. I've had so many kids come through, and it's, as I looked through the list of kids that I've had in my club over the past 14 years now, it has been an incredible ride. And thank you very much. And I do really want to pay a lot of respect to these five, first five kids right here. This is, and of course, now because I'm in front of everybody, I'm gonna forget everybody's names. And now, I have to also remember your name, not your nickname. So, this is Corbin and Taylor. Raise your hand when I say your name, please. Corbin and Taylor. Tyler, my club president. Ellie. I know your name, I promise. I have to remember the real name. Andrew. And then, we have, oh my gosh, in front of a group of people. I have Melissa and another Andrew. And I have Annabelle. And I have Caleb and Ariana. And I have Dylan, not your older brother, but Dylan. And I have Brayden. And I have, not Hayden, that's your other teammate. Jeremy. I have multiple, I've had multiple Jeremys. And Danielle. And these are honestly just a portion. I have 32 kids in my club this year, and they are amazing kids and do amazing things.
Well, thank you so much for the explanation. We enjoyed that. We loved watching the robots. And thank you for your dedication to your team. And I'm telling you, that was pretty impressive to get the right names. Yeah. I just called Superintendent Linford. I mixed up him with Superintendent Newey, so it's okay. So, I'm impressed that you did that. So, thank you. That takes so much work and dedication. Thank you to our great principal, Lori Hawthorne. And thank you to each of you. You are representing Davis School District well and learning a lot of life lessons. And we wish you well in world championships in May. But to have 13 state championships, that deserves another round of applause. That is just truly remarkable. So, and that represents so many hours after school, before school, and going on these trips. And I wish you luck on your AP exams, too. But we also have a plaque for you that Ms. Julie Powell will be presenting. And if you're a parent, will you raise your hand? We have parents. We know they can't do this without the parents. So, thank you, parents, also. We're going to take a picture with them. And afterwards, if any parents want to come up, we can take a picture of you with them also. Sure. Sure.
I just want to really acknowledge Mr. Laufson.
Yes.
He just takes care of these kids very well.
Yes.
Not just in the robotics lab, but before and after. And he is a person that they can talk to, and he supports them in many, many ways. And I don't, he didn't say this, but these kids...
And I don't, he didn't say this, but these kids do this all without, uh, he can't tell them what to do, but he teaches them in a way that they figure it out. Do you know what I mean?
That, that they're governing themselves, he's teaching them and then...
Well, no, not just governing, but...
But making the decisions?
All the decisions, it has to be student-led, student-run, and he lets them do that, but in a way that he's still teaching them, and he works together with them really well, and he makes them work hard, but he makes it fun when they work hard, too.
Well, thank you for saying that, we so appreciate Mr. Laufson, that, that is an amazing amount of time. Thank you so much, we do acknowledge you, and, and each one of you and your parents, what an amazing accomplishment, so thank you so much for being with us. And yeah, you're welcome to hang out with us if you'd like, or you don't have to. Thank you for being here, congratulations. Okay, we have just one committee report for tonight, and that is our audit committee, so I will give the time to Julie Powell, she's the chair of our audit committee, to give her audit committee report.
Okay, so it, further along in the board meeting, we're gonna present, as an audit committee, a recommendation for our next audit, so I won't get into that. I just wanna reiterate where our plan is as the audit committee pursuant to law. We need to present a yearly and annual plan of the audit topics, so we will address the first one today, and then we will address subsequent ones later. Just one thing I wanna quickly mention, I just encourage, so I had kind of encouraged you all to either reach out to one of us for topics, if you're, if you wanna bring up any topics, we do have several, actually, we've, we've discussed, but I just would encourage you to be careful when you communicate with audit committee, try not to get four people on an email discussing things that we're supposed to talk about in open board meetings, so we keep in compliance with, yeah, open board meeting laws, so, that's it.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Powell. Now we have the board reports from board members, and I was asked to start down here with Joanie.
Because we always start...
Well, not according to the other end down here, so...
We just thought it would be fun.
Ms. Stevens.
Perfect, I love it. It's been a great month since we last met, I think it was snowing last time we got together, isn't that crazy?
Yeah.
But busy with committee meetings and working on finding out my constituents' budget priorities, as we're looking at that. I enjoyed a tour of Bountiful Elementary that Elisa put together, it was amazing to see, it's a beautiful school that we'll be going in, but also just the way that they've been really mindful about the needs of the students and adding versatility to the ways that they can utilize the spaces there, so well done. I went to Stewart Elementary's production of Seussical, which was a lot of fun, I know that was the season of elementary school plays, and I love how they bring our communities together and the work that goes into that. Unify, I went to the state unified basketball at the Delta Center and saw Bountiful and Clearfield, and not only is it fun to go see them play, but also to see the support that they get from their peers, it's amazing. Also was able to go to the refugee night that was at Viewmont High School, and that was really beneficial in being informed about resources that are available and ways that we can help refugees in our community, so I appreciate Viewmont being willing to host that and the work that's being done in our school district. And then I also was able to go to Davis High's Moonlight Serenade fundraiser, which I loved seeing this jazz band, because they had a jazz band there, and they had dancing, and my dad loved jazz music, so I grew up listening to a lot of jazz, and it was really fun. So if you ever get a chance next year to go, I'd recommend going. It's been a fun month.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Powell.
Yeah, I went to my first soup with a sop, I think you guys have maybe gone, but that was a real privilege to go, that's where clusters of schools, you get together and then you recognize one student, often for kindness, which I love. That was a great experience, I did policy committee meeting, audit committee, we worked on some budget proposals, budget priorities, can't read my writing. I listened to some Utah School Board Association webinars, they're really short, and I think they're helpful, I love that they're doing that. And you can go back, just a reminder, you can go back on their website, it's just on the front page, and you can go listen to past ones if you can't do, you can't listen to, they're normally the first ones, day of every month at 11:00, 11:30.
Right, at 11:00.
11:30. I got to go to Canyon Creek just the other day, school visit, and got to see all the fun things that they're doing, that's always fun, because I saw an old neighbor of mine who works there, and that was fun to see her. But yeah, they're doing great things. Let's see, I can't read my writing, so that's it, that's good.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we'll go down to Michelle and I'll, I'll be last.
Mix it up.
All right, okay, I can go, I can do this. I miss seeing Joanie, but I was also at the Refugee Awareness Night at Viewmont, I know, I didn't get to see it, but it was, it was really well attended, and it was super fun, and they had a lot of performances that I wasn't anticipating, so it was fun to see refugees in our community and hear the good things that people are doing. So if anyone's interested in being involved, it was really fun to see what Davis School District is doing to support refugees in our area, that, it's just super humbling, and I know sometimes we think about hosting entire family in our homes, which is an amazing service, a lot do, but there's lots of other ways to support, too, so be sure to look into that if you're interested. It was really fun to go to a lot of community council meetings, it's my favorite time, because they're putting together their land trust, TSSA plans, and so you get to see what schools' priorities are and support them in that way. And Northridge already left, I guess we have a principal here, but I got to go to their Mean Girls production, which was really good and super fun and really funny. And I feel privileged, I got to go to Hades Town at Davis High School Theater twice, because you have to see both casts, and that was really fun. And I was really sad that they had sold out the last couple nights, so I couldn't have more people come. And then a huge shout out to some people from Davis School District, they participated in the Bountiful TEDx evening, where they gave awesome speeches, Dr. Toon was one of them, and he talked about parenting with AI tools, and it was really good, and then his wife kinda stole the show, because she did a great job. But she talked about really ending the cycle of homelessness and some of the good things we're doing here at the school district. It was such a good way, I can't wait for those videos to come out and get shared at a broader audience, because I think, keep thinking the things we're doing here at the school district are so good and they're helpful, and they're, they're, you know, stopping the cycles, you know, at the very heart of it with schools, and I'm excited for that to get a bigger audience, so, fun of that. And then Julie Lob from Davis High School, she also presented, and she's the smartest, coolest chemistry teacher that my daughter has, and she talks all about lean thinking, so if you have a chance, go watch those. That was a fun highlight for Davis School District, kind of a non-sponsored thing. And then one fun thing that Mountain High School is doing, they're doing an owl reading program, where three times a week, I don't know if it's the same time every week, but one of the times I was there, they have students drop everything they're doing and pick up a physical book and read for 10 minutes, and it's really awesome. And they gave me a shirt, and they said you have to promise to wear this to school board, and I didn't bring it, so, just, I promise you it's a really cool shirt, I'm gonna wear it next week, but it was really fun, and they talked about this, the studies that have shown, you know, actual reading a physical book every single day can, you know, change so much in a student's life, so I, I think that was a really fun, fun thing that they worked on. And then I also went to Moonlight, Moonlight Serenade, that was so fun, and I didn't realize it's been going for like 30 years, and then I remembered, I guess that, that adds up, because I remember siblings in there at the very beginning. Canyon Creek was a very cool school visit, I had actually never been in that school before, but I ride my bike there all the time, so I got to actually go in this time, so that was fun. And then I also attended the ELA Curriculum Open House, the virtual open house, and we're gonna talk about that today, and I just wanted to say, if parents are interested in seeing the curriculum that's going out, there's always a way to get informed before we approve it, so that was fantastic. And Audit Committee and Finance Committee, I'm becoming a numbers nerd, whether I wanna be or not, so, anyway, lots of good stuff, thanks for doing, or present.
Thank you, Ms. Parmer, Ms. Mercer.
I also had a busy, whoops, let me turn that off. Had a busy month, and it's, I'm excited to report on some of those things. Board Member Hogan and I went to Clearfield High and met with the Latinos in Action Group, and then I, honestly, there's nothing I enjoy more than being able to talk directly with and work with the students, so I really had a great time with that, and was impressed by the student leadership that is modeled there. I went, also went and toured the new Bountiful Elementary building, and wanna give a shout out that May 16th, there's going to be an open house for that, so if anyone wants to see the new building and, and everything, please come be part of that, we'd love to have you, I think it's from 4 to 7. I went on a visit to Orchard Elementary, and one of the goals that they had, they have an awesome librarian, and one of their goals was to, for the students to check out more than 10,000 books, and they have blown past that goal, and I loved seeing the librarian's engagement with the students, and I loved seeing how much the staff and the teachers cared and knew each of the students individually, I was very impressed with that while I was there. I went to Woods Cross Elementary STEM Night, and, which was a Candy Land theme, and it was amazing, there was, there was a science ice cream going on and games, and how much you can, could float on a piece of tin foil, and, and that was really fun, and, and Principal Ekstrom even dressed up as King Candy, which was, which was very impressive. I think his office staff might have pressured him into that, but way to go. I also went to the state unified sports at the Delta Center, and that was so much fun, I saw two, the Two Woods Cross teams and Clearfield team play, and we were all having such a good time, and I, it was, I'd never been on the floor of the Delta Center, that was cool, and we had a great time. I, I just, we, we had spring break, which it would've been nice if we'd scheduled better weather for that week, but you know, maybe someone can work on that next time. I also went on a visit to Mueller Park Junior High, and I was really impressed by the way that they cultivated a remarkable sense of belonging. They, they have, and, and that's a little bit complicated, because they have two dual immersion programs that feed into that school, both Chinese and French, which, which means that they have a lot, a diversity of skills in their, in their teachers, which I was so impressed with, and, and they have a play this weekend, Beetlejuice, if you wanna go see a fun play, I've heard that it's going to be really fun, so. I went to Woods Cross High School, which is the school where two of my kids go to school, and I, I didn't think that I could be more impressed with Woods Cross, but I was, I got to see parts of the school that I had never seen before, I went into the automotive classroom where a student had completely taken, there were parts of the car that I didn't know existed, that he was showing me, and I was very impressed. And I saw an amazing English lesson where a teacher just expertly was explaining satire, and, and I was so impressed with that, it was in a chemistry class that was engaging, and the students were, were doing experiments to understand theories, and an engaging math class where, where I saw, it seemed like much more than when I remember being in math class, that students were getting up and there, there were, there were boards all around the entire room, and groups of students would get up and work on the, the problems together, and then discuss how they did them different ways, and they were really understanding the concepts behind the math, so it, it was amazing. And just a shout out to, at the end of the month, they, they are also performing Guys and Dolls, so if you're looking for a fun play to see, that'll be a good one. I also went on a tour of the Davis Technical College with President Brush, and again, so amazed by the partnerships and the collaboration and the vision that President Brush has for that school, and I'm so grateful for the partnership that we have with Davis Technical College. And lastly, I got to visit Muir Elementary, which I'm, I'm like Michelle, it's one of the nearest schools, and I hadn't even been inside the building yet, so I loved being able to go there, they, they have an interesting architectural things in Muir, where they have open concept rooms, where classrooms that don't have doors around them, and, but the teachers and the students have learned how to, and, and I, I guess that was all the rage in the 60s when it was built, and they've, but, but they've learned how to, to work through those challenges and, and use it as a way of, of being able to collaborate. And I'd also like to make a special shout out to Kate, who is one of the staff members, who watches every single board meeting, so I, I hope she, I'm grateful for her, I know, right? Kate, yes. But that's, that's my report, so.
Thank you, Ms. Mercer. Okay, Ms. Hogan.
Okay, thank you, President Gerard. I just have four things I wanted to share with the board that I was able to participate with this last month. The first was at Sand Springs Elementary last week, they, the counselor, the school counselor there, Lisa Van Dyke, put together this competition that's called Amazing Shake. If you've heard of it, it's actually a competition that teaches the kids how to shake, give a good shake, handshake, look people in the eye when they're talking to them, and how to ask questions and carry on a conversation. So I thought that those are great skills to be teaching the kids, and they made it into a fun competition. So I went and got to shake a lot of hands and listen to a lot of kids, asked me what my favorite food was, and my favorite color, and some other things. And then they're graded, we graded them, and there'll be some of the older grades that will move on to a second and a third round. So it took a lot of work to put that together, and that was a fun thing to help with at Sand Springs Elementary. At Syracuse Junior High, because this month is Military Child Support Month, what is it called exactly? Anyways...
Military Students Month, what's it called, Mr. Zerbakan?
Military Child Month, sorry.
Military Child Month.
Yeah. Anyways, Principal Chapel put together a veterans parade that I actually got sick and I couldn't make it, I was very sad to not make it, but they had about 10 vets walk around the school, and all the kids came out and cheered them on, and, and one of them was Principal Chapel's dad, so it was, it was, I just wanna give a shout out for that, that was a really great thing that Syracuse Junior High did. Another event that I had on my schedule, but missed unfortunately, was the groundbreaking for the South Clearfield Adaptive Playground, which was put in through the Clearfield High Falcons Are Fabulous fundraiser that they do every year, and they just raised the money in December, and so they already had the playground built and ready to go in four months, which was really surprising. So Adaptive Playground, if you don't know, is a playground that has accessibility to all children that might have a disability or, or need some help being able to play on the playground. And then the last thing I wanted to share with the board is that I went to the Transportation Department, and they are wanting or starting to upgrade their buses. They wanna have devices in the buses instead of paper, right now they have paper routes that they have to follow on paper, because they're not allowed to use their phones. And so the, this is a system that would have the routes that they could follow, especially if they're a sub and they don't know the route. It's a lot safer, it also helps them navigate if there's road closures or, or some other detour that they need to take. And then there's also a part of the system that the kids can check in and check out, and there's an app the parents can have, so the parents can track their kids and know, first of all, if the kids are on the bus, and if there's any delays or any of that. So there's a cost to this, of course, so they're gonna just start out with a pilot, I believe, for the sped buses, so I just wanted to share that.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Hogan, Ms. Price.
Okay, I was able to attend my committee meetings this last month, I've been to several track meets, high school track meets. I attended the Curriculum Review Open House and reviewed the materials online and in person. I was able to attend the Priority Schools High School Cohort, where the high schools presented on their goals and the things that they're doing in their school for belonging and inclusion, and it was really, just really cool to see how every school, they do it a little bit differently, just based on the needs of their students and just the personality of the school, and so... students and just the personality of the school. And so, Ms. Barber, when you mentioned the Owl Reading, I was like, that sounds familiar. And that's because Mountain High, yeah, they, they presented that in their, it was in their presentation. So that was really, really great. And our OEO department's doing a really great job continuing with belonging and inclusion, even though we are, we've met our commitment with the DOJ. And then I was able to go on a school visit at Lakeside Elementary. And it's, that's my favorite elementary because that's where my kids went. And I just have a lot of, it feels like home there. And so it was just fun to go and have an official visit.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Price. A lot of these, some of these have been mentioned, not all of them. I had first on my list, the great opportunity to attend the ribbon cutting for the All Ability Playground. And it, it was just so heartwarming to see what these high school kids did to raise money for these children, to use this playground, who, children of all different abilities. But the fact that they raised over $100,000 for this playground is very impressive. And it was just a wonderful event to attend. I was able to attend the Kindness Summit held at the University of Utah. And that's a place where a lot of good people gather in one room and celebrate acts of kindness. So that is just very inspiring and uplifting to hear how the simple act of kindness is changing lives. So that was a great day. I attended many lacrosse games, watching Mason play. And he plays for Beaumont High School. And, and just always impressed by the great sportsmanship that is shown by our students. Also, it's track season for me too. So I've been, yesterday, attended the first junior high track meet to watch Audrey compete for Fairfield Junior. And that is just a busy beehive of activity, those track meets. And everybody's going here and there. And they're just a fun thing to be part of. We talked about with Dr. Wilkie earlier, the community councils. And again, just so impressed and amazed by what our community councils do, and so appreciative of them giving their time. Able to attend a few of those, Layton and Davis. And their input and work is invaluable. And all, all for students, spending that money as wisely as they can for students. I attended my first Soup with the Soup. And yes, it was a great event. And Ms. Moore and, and others who might work on it, and Superintendent Linford putting that together. And it's just a celebration of our, our children who get to go to that. It's a great opportunity for them. And I appreciate the principals and time and effort they put in to be there and to choose a student who's very deserving. That is just another uplifting thing that we do in our district. Finance Committee has been very exciting. We've been working on things and still continue to work on, on financial priorities. Bountiful Elementary was an amazing school, an amazing tour. I so appreciated being able to go there. And, and so appreciated also President Darren Brush at Davis Technical College. He, he took so much time there with Ms. Mercer. And I came also, although I've been there for many years. It's, it's growing. It's an amazing campus. And they are a great partnership for us. And he, he took a lot of time. And he's just a great leader there and a good partner with us. Yesterday, Governor Cox was there at Davis Technical College, signing some bills into law. And that was a great opportunity to have them there. And one of the bills that was signed into law was the Catalyst Bill, named after our Catalyst Center. But it's, it's going to be great to encourage these CTE classes and giving those grants to other school districts. So they can start building these centers like, like we have. And I am so grateful for that, for the foresight that our district leaders had to build the Catalyst Center. And that, that's an amazing place. And that's exciting to see some of the other districts be able to do that, too. The TEDx event, it was wonderful, hearing Ms. Lob, but also the Toon Team. So that's my new name for them. For Karen Logan Toon is the Toon Team. And Eric White, an amazing duo. They gave great speeches and represented as well. So thank you for that. Okay. That concludes the board reports. Looks like we've been busy. We have a lot to say, especially when we only have one meeting in the month. So thank you, board members, for all, all you do. And now, we get the opportunity to hear from our student board members. And Dr. Linford is going to talk to, talk about them a little bit and then give them the chance to talk.
Okay, I'll keep it super brief so that we can hear from them. You know, Keno and Ava are, are pretty special. We know that. They, they, we know that student body officers just have the opportunity to make a real difference in their schools and to, to influence the culture. And, and all of the things that the leaders wish they could influence in the way that the students can. And they, of course, we, you hear me say this a lot, but our young people operate in spaces that we're just not invited to as adults. So it's, it's really, it's really, I'm going to use the word blessing in our lives to know that we have strong leaders working in those spaces. And we just trust them that they're doing great work. Well, it's awesome to get to know kids like Keno, kids, young adults, young powerful leaders like, like Keno and Ava, and get to hear their thoughts and their opinions. We've actually heard quite a bit from Ava. Like, she's influenced the way I think about several things this year and, and student experience. And I've thought, I've thought about her words multiple times this year as I've made decisions. And, you know, when, and one thing that I really love about Keno is when he does talk, people listen to because he's, you know, he's the, maybe the strong silent type, like I try to be, but fail at sometimes. So anyway, with, I said, I wasn't going to talk very long, and I did. But, and really appreciate these two. They've been a really impactful, important part of our, of our Student Advisory Council this year. And I'll turn the time over to them.
Okay. Yeah. So.
Okay. So my name is Ava Kindred.
There's a, there's a little green light.
It's on now.
Come on.
Okay. Is that working? Perfect.
Yeah.
Okay, yes. My name is Ava Kindred. Just a little bit about myself. I obviously go to Layton High. I'm SBO president. I also play volleyball. And student government is amazing. And in the fall, I plan on going to Utah State to be an Aggie ambassador. So just to, we're just going to go over some of the stuff that we've been working on at Layton High. So to start, we've been working on a fundraiser this year called Davis Dreams. And Davis Dreams is a fundraiser that we have begun to help to build this year. And it's aimed at giving grants to students in our district who are facing hardships, like medical bills or family, deaths in the family, or house fires. And this was our Christmas fundraiser that we focused on, but also a full year program that we wanted to help raise money for, to create some hope for these students.
Yeah. Is this on? Oh, sweet. Awesome. So we thought it would be fun for, to open up like our prom royalty, like really open it up for our student body. So it's not necessarily like popularity wise with our previous system of voting. So we decided to come up with this idea of Royalty Week. It, with the goal of, you know, helping like bolster our community within our school and really build up our school pride. Dang, the hot seat.
You're doing great.
Oh, thank you. Thank you. Anyways, so we, this is like a week before our prom week. And it's a week filled with competitions. It's like a tournament style. So any students can sign up and compete. And the winner after this week is crowned our, we are calling it our emperor because, you know, we're the Layton Lancers. So we really want to tie that into the school theme. But yeah, it's open up to the whole school. And it's been pretty fun so far.
Yeah. And Keno's not giving himself enough credit. He has built Royalty Week from the ground up. And it's been really cool. Okay, next, we, as someone mentioned, it's Military Month. And we kind of have a condensed Military Week, where we focus on honoring and recognizing the students of military families. And in this, we have a full week where the school is decked out in purple decorations. And we have spirit dress up days. And the officers will go around bringing candy to these students and inviting them to pizza lunch days. And really, we just want to take the time to honor these students who aren't very often recognized. So that's been really, a really cool way to support the big population of military students we have at our school. Another thing we've been focusing on this year especially is, as the upcoming elections for the next year of student governments has been coming up, we've been focused on getting a more diverse group of officers. Because often you'll see that people in student government will tell their group of friends to try out for student government. And then it only ends up representing one group. So we've been, really been promoting getting a wide range of students to try out and represent the school more evenly. And I think since trying to make this change, we've seen a huge difference in just a lot more people being represented in our student government.
I agree. Let's see. Another awesome thing that we're doing at Layton High is we're trying to rework how our MAC organization kind of works and flows within our school. It's an older program and it's kind of starting to show it. So we've been like talking about restructuring it. It used to be, or it currently is, an appointed system, where our current members are appointed in to the MAC Council by our teachers. And this has been awesome. But we, there's a lot in the work. So I don't really, really know what I could say because that might all change. So I'll just say, I bet, we're hoping to make great progress in the future. And I hope it all goes good.
Yeah. So yeah, it's been a really great year. And just to close, I want to shout out our awesome advisors and principal, because they have really made, working this year, and Keno and I have both done student government for a few years now. And they really make it so amazing and really easy to reach out to people at our school if needed. So yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. It's so great hearing from you and hearing all the great things that you're doing at Layton High. It sounds like you're really making an effort to make, make everyone feel welcome and a part of things at Layton High School. And that's, that's a really important thing to do. Some of those kind acts of service, or, or just a smile, or something you might say to someone, it, it might really change their day or, or even their life. You just never know. So thank you for all the efforts you're putting in there. And could we just, do we have parents in the audience? Just raise your hand. Because I, I'm sure you're just really proud of these students. So thank you for sharing them with us. And how, and I see Mr. Jackman back there. And advisors, raise your hand. Thank you so much for the work that you're doing with these students. And they're just exemplary students. And just representing Layton High School well and Davis School District well. So thank you for being with us. And feel free to add any more input, anything else you would like to say. So thanks. Okay. Another exciting part of our meeting tonight, I'll turn the time to Superintendent Dana Linford for our administrative appointments.
Okay. We, we are, we're trying it, something a little bit different this year. And we are, we've asked them to pre-record themselves introducing themselves. Some, some, some years, as you know, as we go through this introductory process, our concern has been that some folks are talked over, some of the, some of the logistical things don't give everyone an opportunity. So this year, we are going to play a recording that they, that we pre-recorded of them introducing themselves. Because we have so many new administrators, and the, the short film will be about 40 minutes long, we thought appropriate to provide everyone a movie snack.
Thank you.
While we, while we enjoy the introductions of our new administrators. I hope you will, you will absorb and enjoy, thank you, that these folks all applied for these jobs, that we have hundreds of applicants. And these are the folks that right now will be, have accepted and will be taking new administrative positions. This is an exciting life, the life of administrator and their families. And so let's try to absorb that and just enjoy the introductions.
Hi, my name is Julie Barlow. I have been a secondary English teacher, both junior high and high school, for most of my career. I was an assistant principal at Layton High for several years, before taking over as the Humanities Director in Davis District. But next year, I'm really excited to go to Woods Cross Elementary as their principal. Go Wolverines!
Hello, I'm Elizabeth Jensen. And I am very excited to be the incoming principal at Joseph Cook Elementary School. A little bit about me, I have four kids from ages 10 to 17, and an amazing husband, who also was a teacher for about 10 years. I come from a special education background. I graduated from BYU in 2006 with my degree in Special Education, mild, moderate disabilities. I've worked online and in elementary schools as a resource teacher for most of my career. And the past three years, I've been an administrative intern at King Elementary. My favorite thing about education is seeing the positive impact it has on students, on families, and the community.
Hi, my name is Heidi Miners. I'm going to be the principal at Sunset Elementary. And I have with me today, two of my three children. I have Caitlin and her significant other Kirsten, and Skylar and her fiance Stockton. They're getting married June 7th, and we're very excited about that. My background includes teaching at South Clearfield Elementary. I was also a reading interventionist and literacy coach at Crestview Elementary. And then I went into administrative interning, where I was at Crestview Elementary, Whitesides Elementary, and King Elementary. I'm sad to be leaving Title I in federal programs, but look forward to this next adventure. Go Titans!
Good evening. My name is Craig Madrow. And I'm going to be the principal at West Point Elementary. I've been with the district for about 20 years. I started my career at West Point Junior High as a social studies teacher. I spent about 15 years there. And I've spent the last four as an elementary intern. My family has been involved in the district. My wife just retired after 30 years with the district. And I have two kids that are also teachers in the district. And so we've been around for a long time. And I just wanted to let you know that I'm very, very excited for this new opportunity. And I want to thank, thank you for helping me.
Hello, I am Jennifer Poole. And my new assignment is principal at Antelope Elementary. For the past six years, I have been an intern, and most recently at Antelope Elementary. I taught seven years prior at the secondary level in special education. I have a husband. His name is Jace. I also have four kids, two bonus kids, and two adorable grandkids, who are also thrilled and excited for my new adventure next year.
Hello, my name is Clayton Reed. And I am so excited to be, provided the opportunity to serve as the next principal of Windridge Elementary. This year, I've been serving as an admin intern in the Davis School District, at Oak Hills Elementary and Taylor Elementary. Both have been amazing schools. I love them both very much. Previously, I have served as a principal at a charter school and a assistant principal as a charter, at a charter school. I've also been a special education teacher and instructional coach. My family wanted to be here this morning, but we have some who are not feeling well today. So I'll tell you a brief bit about them. I've been married to my wife for 17 years. And we have three amazing daughters, one in high school, one in junior high, and one in elementary. Again, I'm so grateful for the opportunity to serve as a principal in the Davis School District. I'm excited to get to know my Windridge Wolves.
Hello, my name is Janie Stubbs. And I have the opportunity to be the principal of Canyon Creek Elementary next year. I am beyond excited to join this incredible community and to be a part of the amazing things that they're already doing there. I am the daughter of a Davis educator. I have three children, Zachary and Abigail, who are both Syracuse High graduates, and a son, Preston, who is a sophomore at Clearfield High. I also have a bonus daughter who's exceptional, and her name is Liberty. My husband, Chris, is an educator. He teaches secondary mathematics. I am looking forward to continuing to learn and grow in this new position. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Mike Vollmar, principal at Muir Elementary. And next year, I get to be principal at Muir Elementary. I retired in 2022 with 18 years of being a principal, 10 at Sam Morgan, and eight at Orchard Elementary. I had a great opportunity to come back in November and have loved being here at Muir. I have a family with a wife and four kids. My youngest is currently a junior at Utah State. My other three are successful in their jobs. So my old startup is back in DC. So get a chance to go back there quite often. And my wife is an accountant working at a small trucking company in Salt Lake. Whole family's excited I'm back at school. They felt like I retired way too young and are excited that I'm back. So it's good to be back. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Sharnelle Winham. And I'm honored to accept the appointment of principal at West Bountiful Elementary. I've spent 13 years in education, 12 of which have been in Davis. I taught at Foxborough Elementary and Clinton Elementary. And the last six years, I've been the administrative intern at Mountain View Elementary and Adams Elementary. I'm excited to honor and serve the community of West Bountiful. I can't wait to become a bear cub. I'm excited to honor and serve the community of West Bountiful. I can't wait to become a Bear Cub.
Hi, my name is Emily Jackson. I have been teaching with Davis School District for 15 years. The last two years I have spent at East Leighton Elementary School in the social behavior program. And prior to that, I spent 13 at Crestview Elementary School in the learning centers and then the SB program there as well. I will be moving to Antelope Elementary School this fall as the administrative intern there. And I am beyond excited to be an All-Star. I cannot wait to get to know my new school and the students there.
Greetings, Davis School Board. My name is Dr. Darren James. And currently I'm an administrative intern at Antelope Elementary in Clearfield. I will be moving this coming year to Columbia Elementary in Caseville. I'm so excited to continue developing relationships with students as well as teachers and helping them navigate problems that might exist in their lives. Thank you so much for your time. Looking forward to an amazing school year.
Hi, my name is Renee Jakes and I have been teaching elementary for nine years in third and second grade. In February, I was offered the position as administrative intern at Caseville Elementary. And past two months have been incredible and a whirlwind and I've had a lot that I still need to learn. But just coming out of the classroom, I feel like I have the opportunity of understanding what's happening there. And I'm excited for the opportunities to support students and teachers. But I'm also excited for the opportunity that I will have to grow and learn from this position.
Hi, my name is Kristin Kitamura and I am really excited to be accepting an administrative intern position at both East Leighton Elementary and Parkside Elementary. I've been teaching for 13 years in high school English departments. I've been at Bonneville, Fremont and New Ames. I'm currently at New Ames. I also adjunct at Weaver State for the English department. The thing that I'm most excited about is working with Kurt Farnsworth and Natalie Vincent. I think getting experience at two different schools is going to be really fun and I'm excited to contribute to both campuses.
Hello, I'm Kimberly Landon and I am going to be the new admin intern at Holbrook Elementary. I have been in education for 28 years, most of which have been within the Davis School District. I have taught kindergarten through second grade. I am currently teaching kindergarten at Farmington Elementary. And I have also been a literacy coach for Davis School District. I have loved my career, but am also really excited to embark on this new opportunity. Thank you so much. I have a wonderful family, my husband Eric and two daughters. My youngest is a senior at Farmington High, so I'm really excited and sad about that, but ready for this new adventure in my life and so grateful for the opportunity. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Amber McCord. This is my 20th year teaching and I've taught at four different high schools, including Alta, Bountiful, Syracuse and Northridge. During my teaching experience, I've taught everything from ELD all the way up to CE English. I also teach PE and dance. I've taught for Davis Connect. And I have been involved in extracurriculars my entire time, either in cheer or in dance. I'm so excited to be at Lincoln Elementary next year. And I have an awesome husband who is a teacher at Northridge, a son who will be a seventh grader at Shoreline and a daughter who is going to be a fifth grader at Ellison. I can't wait to get started with my new team. It's going to be awesome.
I'm Jacqueline Moses and this is my husband, Dr. Absa Moses. I'm the newly appointed assistant principal intern at Foxborough Elementary School. I've worked in education for more than 20 years with the majority of that time in special education. I am excited to continue my journey with the Foxborough team under the visionary leadership of Principal Trulson. I look forward to working collaboratively with the amazing principals, dedicated teachers, supportive families and most importantly, the hardworking students. My ultimate goal is to assist the continuing efforts of Foxborough in making a difference as a model school where educational success for all students is achieved.
Greetings from Daytona Beach, Florida. My name is Tammy Nederhauser. I'm the new administrative intern assigned to Lakeside Elementary. I've been there since February and absolutely am loving it. I started my teaching career, taught for six years in Davis Elementary Schools, up in Morgan for 15 years, and now it's great to be back. My husband and I are both products of Davis School District, Fremont Elementary, Sunset Junior High and Clearfield High School. And I have got a daughter who's a student athlete on the cheer team at Weaver State. That's what we're doing here in Daytona. And I have a son who's 25 in the finance world and I'm thrilled to be here.
My name is Jessica Pierce and I am delighted to be the new administrative intern at Bluff Ridge Elementary School. I graduated from Vumont High School. I've been a teacher for 15 years. I taught theater and English in the Canyon School District and the Murray City School District and most recently in the Davis School District at Farmington Junior High. My reason for everything I do is my second grader Sammy, who refused to be in this video with me, so you get a picture instead. She's perfect. She has a lot of challenges that could make school really, really difficult for her. But you know what? Her teachers and her administration at her school meet her where she's at and because of that, she loves school. And I hope that I can do that for every child that I interact with as well. I am just delighted for this opportunity to be a new administrative intern.
Hello, my name is Catherine Swingyard. Before entering administrative positions, I taught second grade for eight years, four in Granite School District and four in Davis School District at Woods Cross Elementary. I am assigned to be an intern at King Elementary School in Leighton, Utah for the 2025-2026 school year. I am a mother of two children. Grace is 21 and is currently attending Utah Tech University. She graduated from Vumont High School in 2022. Nick is currently a junior at Vumont High School. One thing that's unique about me is I love to travel and I hope to be able to visit every national park during my lifetime. I'm excited to be working at King Elementary as an intern and look forward to working with the staff and community to help students grow and learn.
Hi, I'm Jessica Taylor. I began my educational career teaching elementary for a couple of years and then spent nine awesome years at Caseville Junior High, teaching math. This past year, I was one of the administrative interns at Leighton Elementary. And I'm excited that I get to continue that at Sunset Elementary as an admin intern. Go Tigers! I have three awesome kids. My oldest son is in second grade. My daughter will be going into kindergarten next year and my youngest has been at the Davis High Daycares where he has been well taken care of. I'm so excited to go to Sunset Elementary.
Hello, I'm Jill Weber and I will be the new intern at Orchard Elementary. I'm looking forward to this awesome opportunity. As a teacher, I have worked and taught first, third, fifth and sixth grades in Davis School District. And also we have four children and our youngest graduates this year and we love Davis School District. And I appreciate the opportunity to be a new intern. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Doug Hammerschmidt. I'm going to be principal at Shoreline Junior High School next year. I'm here with my wife Jamie and our two kids. Jamie is a fifth grade teacher at Leighton Elementary. Eli graduated recently and is in college and he works at Leighton Elementary as well in their after-school program. And Amelia is a junior at Davis High School and she works at Davis High After School in their childcare center. So we all count ourselves in the ranks of Davis School District. This is my 20th year in education. I'm currently the principal at Syracuse Elementary and have worked at all three levels of education. But the bulk of my experience has actually been at the junior high school. I taught junior high for nine years and have been an assistant principal there and can say that I have loved my time working with junior high school students and excited to start that again. Lastly, I just want to express my gratitude for this opportunity. So thank you. I am excited to begin and can't wait to call myself a Shoreline Shark.
Hi, I'm Pat Lemos, new principal at Syracuse Junior High. I started my career in education in 2002 at Box Elder High School as an ESL tutor and counseling secretary. I've been a counselor at Woods Cross High School, Leighton High, and admin at Syracuse High, North Leighton Junior High and Northridge High. I've been married for going on 32 years, have two grown kids and have a grandbaby on the way. Just want to take this time to say how excited I am to get to know the faculty at Syracuse Junior High and get to know the community and continue serving the Davis School District.
Greetings, everybody. Hello, Board. We're the Tupia family. My name is Elliot Tupia and my new assignment will be at Mueller Park Junior High as the new principal. Super excited. This is my lovely family, Coco and my wife Heather and my son Eli here in the back paint, drawing. Currently, I'm at Woods Cross High School as one of the assistant principals. Prior to that, I was at Mueller Park Junior High as one of the assistant principals. So super excited to go back and yeah, go Panthers.
Hi, I'm Jacob Douglas. I am currently the administrative intern at Central Davis Junior High. Previous to that, I worked as an instructional coach and I spent several years teaching social studies at both high school and junior high school level. Next year, I will be assistant principal at Fairfield Junior High. My wife Olivia and I have two daughters, Addie, who is 10, and Eleanor, who is eight. And I am incredibly excited to join the Fairfield team next year.
Hello, my name is Kim Henson. I started teaching at Leighton High School in special education and then I moved over to Syracuse High School where I taught special education for a while. And then I switched over and taught French for a total of 17 years between Leighton and Syracuse. I have been an administrative intern at Vumont for the last two years. I also spent some time at Bountiful Junior last year. I'm looking forward to my new assignment, which is at Farmington Junior High, and it will be a fantastic experience. I'm really excited. Go Huskies!
Hi, my name is Tasha Miller. I will be going into my 16th year as an employee with Davis School District. I have been at the elementary as a computer teacher, music teacher and librarian. I have been at the junior high as a math teacher and most recently I have been an intern at North Leighton Junior High School. My new assignment will be an assistant principal at North Leighton Junior High School and I'm excited to be working with an awesome team this year. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Neil Porter. I started my career at Caseville Junior High where I was a teacher for 12 years. Then I was an assistant principal at Providence Hall High School for four years. Currently, I'm an administrative intern at Northridge High School. And next year, I will be going to Syracuse Junior High as, as an assistant principal. I couldn't be happier. I love the area and the community and I'm very excited to get started. I have four children from four to 10 years old and they, and my wife are the love of my life. And I couldn't be happier with them and for this experience. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Angela Stewart and I will be the new assistant principal at Caseville Junior High next year. This year, I have been an intern at Leighton High School. And prior to that, I did three years as the science supervisor in teaching and learning. And before that, 17 years as a classroom educator, teaching science in the junior high. I have four children and my husband works for Hitler Force Base. And I am super excited to be part of the Caseville team next year. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jacob Taylor. I will be the new assistant principal at South Davis Junior High. For the past two years, I've been an administrative assistant, one year at Syracuse High School and one year before that at Sunset Elementary. Before that, I taught psychology at Farmington High School and then at Clearfield and I started my career up in Cache Valley. I'm really excited to be at the junior high. So far, I've spent most of my time in high school, a little bit in the elementary and now I'll hit junior high. So I'll have an opportunity to see education on all levels.
Hi, my name is Christy Teckmeyer. I have been in Davis School District for a while now. I started at Mueller Park Junior High, went to Bountiful High and then have spent some years at Leighton High until my most recent return to my alma mater, Clearfield High School as an administrative intern. I've had a great year here and I'm excited because next year I will be at Legacy Junior High, which is an awesome school. I'm excited to learn more, to get back to the junior high roots. I have three adorable little boys that are all at Bluff Ridge Elementary, one of whom will be at Legacy Junior High in another year. And I am just so excited to learn some new things and work with some great people. Thanks.
Hello, everyone. My name is Bradward Jakowski. I'm in my 21st year in the Davis School District, 20 years as an English teacher. My first three years were at Clearfield High, 17 years at Syracuse High and currently I'm at Bountiful High as an administrative intern. Next year, I'll be going to Horizon Junior High. This is my wife Michelle. I'm excited to be at a new school. I know its challenges. In case you can't tell, this is my excited voice. Thanks for having me. See ya.
My name is Amy Wright and I'm headed to Mueller Park Junior High as an assistant principal. I can't wait to join Principal Tukayu and Mr. Hardy. Go Panthers! I began as an educator in 2000 and taught math for four years at KGH before heading home to raise a family. Five-year plan became a five-kid plan and we have kids spanning elementary to college and they keep us hopping. I returned during the pandemic to the classroom at Shoreline and spent a couple more years teaching math and loved every second of it. The last three years, I've been working as an administrative intern at Centerville Elementary, Farmington Elementary and most recently at Bountiful Junior High. I've been humbled by the wonderful lessons and opportunities I've had from students, staff and leaders. Thanks for every one of you for making a difference.
I'm Darren Atkinson and for the last 10 years, I've been a teacher at Davis School District, working at two separate junior highs, Fairfield Junior High and West Point Junior High. And for next school year, I have accepted the position of administrative intern at Central Davis Junior High. With me today, I have my wife Carrie and our oldest child Ellie is our daughter, who will be a sophomore at Syracuse High School next year. Reed will be our sixth grader at Lakeside Elementary and Bennett will be a second grader next year. I've met with the team at Central Davis Junior High and I'm looking forward to the opportunity to work closely with such an amazing team. Go Cubs!
Hi, my name is Nana Barton. I started my career out in Davis School District, teaching fifth grade. And then I was a mentor, which now they are considered instructional coaches. After that, I was an elementary intern and then I became a principal for elementary schools. So most of my career has been spent in elementary. I then moved to St. George and while in St. George, I served on the Washington County School Board and thoroughly enjoyed my time there. I'm now back and super excited to be amongst my friends in Davis School District. I have been asked to be the intern for Bountiful Junior High School. One special thing about Bountiful Junior High School is my mom walked the halls years and years ago as a young child. I also have six grandchildren and two on the way. And my favorite thing to do is spend time with my grandchildren and my kids. So thank you. I'm so happy to be back with my friends.
Hello, my name is Brian Hale. My background experience includes working as a special education teacher, a German teacher and most recently as an assistant principal. My assignment for next school year is to work as an assistant principal intern at Sunset Junior High. I look forward to meeting and working with the school community there and thank you for this opportunity.
Hello, my name is Juliana Lund and I am a teacher here at Syracuse High School. But next year, I will be joining the administrative team at North Leighton Junior High as an administrative intern. I began my career in 2004 as a classroom teacher and since then have taught everywhere from seventh grade to 12th grade, mostly math, but sometimes history. My husband of 21 years, Troy Lund, is also a teacher here at Syracuse High School. He teaches physics. My son Benjamin is 16 and he's a junior here at Syracuse High School. And my youngest son James is an eighth grader at North Davis Junior High. I am excited for this new chapter in my career in education and to join the administrative team at North Leighton Junior High. Go Longhorns!
Hi, my name is Kennedy Murdock and I am so excited to join Davis School District. I was placed as an administrative intern at Mill Creek Junior High and I can't wait to get to know the students, community and staff that are a part of that school. I've heard it's pretty incredible. For the last five years, I have spent my time in Jordan School District as a math teacher at South Jordan Middle. I love to travel and try new foods. I can't wait to get to know all of you and I hope you all have a good day.
Hey, I'm Adam Rosenberg. I'm so excited to be here and I'm going to be an admin intern at North Davis Junior High. I can't wait for the opportunity and help out in any way I can. I started out at Clearfield Job Corps and then I was hired on at Davis School District at Fairfield Junior High. And then I came to Shoreline Junior High. So I've been in Davis School District for 11 years and I have loved it. This is my family right here. I have four daughters, 19 to nine. My wife and I have been married for 20 years, so kudos to her. She wins a prize, she should. But I'm excited for North Davis Junior High. I can't wait. Go Norsemen!
Hello, I'm TJ Barker and I'm so excited for my new assignment at Clearfield High School. I'm so excited to join their team and be part of the Falcon Nation there. I've been in the district for 26 years. I started out as a teacher at Central Davis Junior High School and then as an administrative intern, later on as an assistant. Then I was an assistant at Fairfield Junior High School. I returned as central as the principal and then I've had the awesome opportunity to be a principal here to open up Shoreline Junior High School. Again, I couldn't have done it without this team, which is most of my family and there we are, intern from Spain last year.
Hi, everybody. My name's Brad Chapel. I've worked for the Davis School District for the last 17 years. I started at Leighton High School as a history teacher and debate coach. Then I was lucky enough to be an assistant principal at Davis High School, after which I was a junior high school principal at both Mill Creek and Syracuse Junior High Schools. Next year, I am so excited to be a high school principal. I'll be going to- I'll be going across the street to be a Syracuse Titan and I cannot wait. I'm psyched about it. This is my family. I didn't bring them with me to work today, but I have this picture of them. So, my wife Mandy, my son Dax, they're my world. I love them and we are all excited to be Syracuse Titans next year. Go Titans!
Hey, we're the Pauls coming to you from the greatest city in Utah, South Weaver. My name is Tyler and I'm excited to be the new principal at North Ridge High School. I'm coming from Davis Catalyst. This is my family. I'd like to introduce you to my wife.
Hi, my name is Lindsay and I teach at Weaver High School.
My name is Paley. I'm an eighth grader at Sunset Junior High.
My name is Wiley. I'm a fifth grader at South Weaver Elementary.
My name is Morley and I'm a second grader at South Weaver Elementary.
My name is Becky. I'm a first grader at South Weaver Elementary.
Okay, you're wondering two things. First, yes, this is how I dress while chilling on the couch in my house. And second, who's the best?
Go Knights!
Hi, my name is Joe Richens. I have been in Davis School District for twenty-six years and I'm super excited that next year I will be the principal at Woods Cross High School. Go Wildcats!
Hi, I am Kim Agustin. I have been in education for the past twenty-two years, including teaching, program coordination, and school administration. I have been an assistant principal for the past seven years. Four years at Syracuse Junior High and most recently at Caseville Junior High. I am excited to say that I am going to high school next year and I am going to be a new assistant principal at Farmington High School. I am thrilled for the opportunity. Thank you.
My name's Heather Bauer. I have been in education for about thirteen years now, ten of which has been as an English teacher. I actually taught at Davis High for four years and was their yearbook advisor as well as an advisor for the student government. For the last three years, I've been in administration. Two years of that has been at North Leighton Junior High, which has been incredible and it's been so much fun to be here. So, I am honored and thrilled to continue to work in this community at North Ridge High School. So, I still get to be part of Ridge City. So, I'm really looking forward to that. If I'm not at work, then I am definitely at a baseball game or a football game or basketball game for one of my kids.
Hello, everybody. My name is Percy Canales and I've been in education for about twenty years. And for the past four years, I've had the privilege of serving as an administrator here in Davis School District. This district quickly became home for me and for my family of six. We felt welcomed, supported, and connected with the motto of learning first from the very beginning. Now, speaking of being home, I'm excited to return with my journey began here in Davis at North Ridge High School as an assistant principal. I am excited to serve that community again. Go Knights!
Hello, my name is Liz Cannon. I will be assistant principal at Leighton High School this coming school year. I have been an assistant principal at the junior high level for the past three years, both at Centerville and Bountiful Junior High. And then before that, I taught special education at each level. We have four kids, Calvin, Aria, Emily, and Sydney, and they all attend school in Davis School District. And this is my husband Cade, who makes everything possible, including my ability to be an admin in Davis School District. I'm very excited to join the Leighton High team and to serve and support the students, families, and staff there. Thank you.
Good evening, School Board. My name is Buck Ekstrom. I'll be a new assistant principal at Woods Cross High School. I've been an elementary principal for eighteen years. King Elementary, South Clearfield Elementary, and most recently at Woods Cross Elementary. So, looking forward to seeing some of my former students at the high school. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jordan Liu. I'm excited to accept the position as an assistant principal at Clearfield High next year. I started my career in Davis County School District as an English teacher at Vumont. And then I went over to Farmington High when that opened up. I served my first year in admin at Bountiful High and then came to Centennial Junior where I'm currently at. I've been here for three years. Loved it here. I have twin boys that are seven. They're at Ellison Park Elementary, second graders. I have a nine-year-old daughter who's at Autism Solutions. And then I have the love of my life, Mackenzie Liu. She's actually an assistant principal at Syracuse Junior High right now. We've been in the area for a while and love it here. I am very excited to go to Clearfield. I love working at the high school and supporting high school students. Go Falcons!
Hi, my name is Stacy Barney. I'm here with my family, Trevor, and my daughter Kyrie, who is a ninth grader at Caseville Junior High, and my other daughter Ally, who is a senior at Davis High. I am currently an intern at Columbia Elementary and I taught previous to that thirteen years in the junior high. And I'm really excited this year to get the opportunity to go and learn about Mountain High and be with those students and the admin there and the teachers and staff. So, thanks for the opportunity. Go Mountain High!
Hi, my name is Donell Call. I am currently an administrative intern at Sunset Junior High School. I began my career in the Davis School District as a school counselor. And next year, I'm moving to Bountiful High School. I have three beautiful children who are products of the Davis School District and a wonderful supportive husband and I'm super excited to move to Bountiful. I love the Davis School District. I'm excited to move into high school and see what happens next.
This is Fernando Cisneros. Currently, I'm the admin intern here at North Davis Junior High School. Prior to becoming an administrator, I was the Spanish dual-language immersion teacher for Granite School District. I taught at Kearns Junior High School and Thomas Jefferson Junior High School. Look forward to meeting the entire staff at Vumont High School. My wife is also a high school teacher for Granite School District. We are empty nesters. We are, all of our kids are out of the ha, out of the house and so we have, do have four young grandkids. Keeps, keeps us busy. And well, again, we look very, very fortunate and grateful to be the next admin intern and look forward to meeting the whole staff at Vumont High School. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Nicole Higgins. I am currently the administrative intern at West Point Junior High. And next year, I will be the administrative intern at Leighton High School and I am looking forward to this opportunity. I'm very excited about it. I have been an educator for over thirty years, the last twelve years as a school administrator. The majority of my experience has been at the elementary level. I have never had experience at the high school level, so I'm really looking forward to this opportunity. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jessica Holtry. I have been with Davis School District now for twelve years. And that entire twelve years, I have made North Ridge High School my home. I was their chemistry AP, chemistry and AP environmental science teacher. And while I am sad to be leaving such a wonderful place like North Ridge High School where I have truly come to love the students, parents, and teachers that work at that school, I'm excited for the new opportunities I'm going to have at Syracuse High School as their administrative intern. I'm not originally from the state, from the great state of Michigan. I'm married a Utah boy and that's what brought me out here. I went to school at the University of Michigan and studied chemistry there and then went on to move to Eastern Michigan to get my teaching certificate. I'm a mother of four. I have two which are grown and out of the house. I have a senior who's graduating this year and she'll start SUU this fall. And then I'll have one left and he will be a senior at Morgan High School. I'm excited to continue my career with Davis School District and I'm excited for the opportunity that has been provided to me to make that dream a reality. So, thank you so much.
Hey, my name is Eric Pratt. I've been assigned to North Ridge High School this next year as an administrative intern. I'm looking forward to becoming a Knight. I'm currently assigned at Mill Creek Junior High. I absolutely love it here. I've loved it everywhere I've been. Before that, I taught science at Leighton High School. And then I did ten years at Farmington Junior High teaching science. Absolutely love being an educator. Besides that, I married my high school sweetheart, Liz. We have three kids, David, Abby, and James. Looking forward to a great year.
Hi, my name is Christopher Thomas and I am going to be an administrative intern at Clearfield High School next year. I started my career with the district at Sunset Junior High where I taught English and Spanish for five years. And then have been at North Ridge High School for this last three years, teaching English as well, helping with student government and also helping with HRS in my building. And I'm looking forward to working with Clearfield and my new administrative team. Thanks.
Hello, esteemed board members. My name is Tim Allen and I am so excited for this chance to introduce myself to you today. I've been an employee of the Davis School District for the past fifteen years. First seven of those were spent as a guidance counselor and the last eight as an administrator. The last three years have been really special for me as I've been an assistant principal at Farmington High School and living in Farmington have been able to serve my own friends and families and neighbors and community. And especially see my own kids go through the high school and be a part of the Phoenix family. This next chapter is an exciting one. I've been asked to be the new director of the Catalyst Center and I'm so happy I get a chance to be part of that unique work and build on the incredible job that Dr. Tyler Paul has done there up to this point. Thank you all so much for this opportunity and again, I look forward to many, many more years of work in the Davis School District. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Danielle Summers and I am excited to take on a new position in Davis School District as the Title Nine Coordinator. Have big shoes to fill, but I'm excited for a new opportunity to learn and to support Davis School District in a new way. Previous to this, I have been working as administrative intern at Orchard Elementary and prior to that, I was actually in the professional learning department at the district and taught prior to that. So, excited to learn something new and to work with our school board members, appreciate the support that we consistently get from our school board. So, excited to join this team and to continue the best work that we can do and that's to serve and support the students and families in Davis School District.
My name is Tiffany Tuck and I am the new Community Schools and Title One Director here in Davis School District. Unable to be here with me today are my two children, Ashton and Kelsey, and my granddaughter, Ashlyn, and my loving supportive husband, Jared. I have been in Davis School District for the past seventeen years, starting out my career as a school counselor before moving into administration. I have been a principal for the past six years, starting out at Bolton Elementary where I was the principal for four years and I've been here at Antelope Elementary for the past two years. I am really excited to take my experiences and background to a different level in supporting all of the schools with different resources and opportunities. Thank you so much.
Hi, I'm Deanne Kapetanov and I have recently been named as a secondary school director. I am super excited to serve in this position. My experience in Davis District includes seventeen years as an administrator and was a teacher before that for eight years. My husband Dan and I have a blended family of ten grown children and fourteen grandchildren, so you can imagine our get-togethers are pretty wild and crazy. I really look forward to working with our principals in our schools as they support our students and our teachers.
Good evening. I'm Chris Keim. I'll be one of the secondary school directors. My wife Stacy and I have one daughter and four sons, all who have or are attending Davis County Schools. We're so grateful for all of the educators who have provided a great experience for our family. I'm excited to work with school district leadership and secondary principals and administrators and teachers and staff to continue to provide a great educational experience for our students.
Hi, I'm Jason Smith. I'm super excited for my new position, which is a secondary school director. I have three children that have all been through Davis District. They're all grown up and so me and my wife are empty nesters right now, so they're not here to introduce to you. I've been in Davis District for twenty-eight years as a teacher and as an administrator. I've had the great opportunity to be the principal of Vumont High School and North Ridge High School and I look forward to this opportunity.
Thank you. I know that was an incredibly long presentation of administrators. I think it's rewarding to see how many great people and with supportive families who will be leading our buildings. I want to make just a quick shout out to Carrie who sent me a text saying, what if we did popcorn? Because this is like a true movie. And I was a little sheepish texting our president and said, what do you think of that? She said, that's a great idea. So, she gave us full approval to pass out popcorn. Thanks. I hope that didn't mess with the dignity of the ceremony. Thank you.
No, I thought the popcorn really added to that excellent movie and we want to congratulate all our new administrators. They're all amazing and we're just so grateful for what they do. So, thank you. Best movie I've seen in a long time. Okay, let's see. We're now going to our consent items. Are there any items on our consent agenda that any board member would like to move?
President?
Yes, Ms. Hogan.
I would like to pull number seven, instructional materials from consent.
Okay. We'll move that to a business item. Okay. You know, let's, let's go ahead and have a motion on the consent items, taking off number seven.
I move we accept consent items one through six and eight.
Second. Okay, Ms. Price has made a motion and it was seconded by Ms. Powell to accept consent items one through six and then number eight. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Okay. I think, I think we'll put number seven at the end. Let's do it that way. Okay. Onto our first business item then. Ms. Tracy Robbins will present this. Boundary realignment for Sand Springs Elementary.
President Gerard, Vice President Price. And esteemed board members, it's good to be with you tonight. I would like to propose, let me get my glasses back on. As you know, last board meeting, a small area of north of Gordon Avenue on one thousand north is currently included in our Sunburst Elementary boundaries. We'd like to propose to move that section into Sand Springs Elementary boundaries. This move is proposed to take place in the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. The realignment, oh, excuse me, administration is here with us tonight and I just want to recognize them, but it is proposed that we approve this on first and final reading.
Okay. Do we have a motion or do we have any questions clarifying before the motion? Seeing no clarifying questions, can I have a motion on that? And this is a first and final.
Okay, I move that we approve the proposed boundary realignment for Sand Springs Elementary and Sunburst Elementary to take effect in the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six school year on a first and final reading.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Hogan. Do we have a second on that?
Second?
Okay. Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Hogan and a second by Ms. Mercer to approve the boundary realignment for Sand Springs Elementary and Sunburst Elementary. That will take effect the beginning of the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-six school year on first and final reading. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any opposed? Okay, that passes. Thank you so much. Okay. Second business item is our audit committee recommendation and that presenter is going to be Ms. Julie Powell, who is the Audit Committee Chair.
Our Audit Committee recommends that our next audit topic be to review Davis Connect program, basically the financials and also the equivalency of the educational classes with traditional in-person classes, things like that. And that's just the basic topic.
Okay. Are there any clarifying questions to ask Ms. Powell and the Audit Committee?
Ms. Hogan? I have a question.
Okay.
Just generally, you mentioned earlier that you, there were several things you guys were looking at. Do we, how does that work? Do we hear all of those and like, can we determine if we think something should be before something else or? Do we just go with the committee's recommendation?
Well, historically, at least since I've been on the Audit Committee, which has been for the last couple, two and a half years, we've just decided as an Audit Committee, the topics presented for the board and usually they just approve it. So, but if the board feels like they want to see all topics, I can do that.
Well, well, it is the committee's job to do this and to look at these. And you have asked for recommendations, so you can always give a recommendation. You've asked a couple of times for those, but, but you're saying that is your recommendation. Can you maybe talk a little bit about timing?
Yeah. I actually was thinking we were going to approve the Davis Connect today. Are we going to motion that? Okay. Yeah, there is no specific timing. It's just that the last couple of years, we've been kind of delayed a lot with a lot of technical issues. So, we want to try and move along, but, so hopefully we can make motion and approve this first one today.
But you have talked to, talked about how you've talked to the auditing.
Did you have a question, Ms. Stevens? Did you have a question?
Just saying that we've talked to the auditing.
Just saying that we've talked to the auditing agency that Ms. Powell has been working on that to see about some of the topics that we came up with as a committee. We weren't sure if they're even feasible or if we had the costs or the budget to cover the costs of some of them. So we've kind of been weeding them out as we've gone.
Okay. Okay, so do you have looked at that? And any other clarifying questions before we vote on their recommendation? And then even after we have a first and a second, we can still talk about it if we'd like, if there's more discussion. So, okay. Seeing no more clarifying questions, is there a motion to approve the recommendation of the Audit Committee?
I move we approve the recommendation of the Audit Committee to audit Davis Connect.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Ms. Price and a second by Ms. Barber to approve the recommendations presented by the Audit Committee. Is there any more discussion before we vote? Okay, seeing none. All in favor of approving the recommendations from the Audit Committee? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that passes. Thank you to Ms. Powell and the other members of the Audit Committee, Ms. Barber and Ms. Stevens. Thank you for your work on that. Okay, next, we have Mr. Tim Luffel on the Woods Cross High School water line replacement.
Yes, so actually tonight, we have three capital projects. And these projects are funded from our capital tax levy that comes in from property taxes each year. The first one is Woods Cross Water Line. It's an existing galvanized system, which is out of date. We have brown water, no pressure. And it's not the kind of minerals we want to be giving our students. So it's time to replace that. So we did a bid process and are recommending that we award the bid to Briskly Plumbing Specialist for an amount of $816,686.
Okay. If you have no questions for Mr. Luffel, then I'd like to hear a motion. Ms. Mercer?
I would like to make a motion to approve the Briskly Plumbing Specialist for the $816,686 for the water line replacement for Woods Cross High School.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second to that motion? I'll second that. Okay, so we have a motion by Ms. Mercer and a second by Ms. Stevens to approve Briskly Plumbing Specialist for $816,686 for the water line replacement for Woods Cross High School. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. That motion passes. Okay, Mr. Luffel. Again, South Davis Junior High boiler replacement.
Yes, it's time for the boiler replacement at South Davis. It is out of date. We can't get parts for it anymore and not working very well. So we recommend after the bid, awarding the bid to Salmon Mechanical in the amount of $639,210.26.
Okay, any questions on that? Okay, can I hear a motion?
I move to approve Salmon Mechanical for $609,210.26 for the boiler replacement at South Davis Junior High School.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Ms. Powell has made the motion. It's been seconded by Ms. Price to approve Salmon Mechanical for $639,210.26 for the boiler replacement at South Davis Junior High School. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. That motion passes. Number five, Mr. Luffel, the Tolman Elementary Boiler Replacement.
Once again, old boiler needs to be replaced. We recommend after the bid process that we award to Salmon Mechanical in the amount of $396,618.64.
Okay. If there are no questions for Mr. Luffel on that one, I'll entertain a motion.
I have a question.
Okay, yeah.
Sorry.
No, that's good. Please ask.
How long will it take to replace the boiler?
Typically, we do it over the summer, so it's ready for the winter.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Good question. Thank you. Okay, any other questions? Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve Salmon Mechanical for $396,618.64 for the boiler replacement at Tolman Elementary.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, Ms. Barber has made a motion, and Ms. Hogan has made a second to approve Salmon Mechanical for $396,618.64 for the boiler replacement at Tolman Elementary. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion passes. All of them have passed unanimously. And now we will go to number seven. And I will give Ms. Hogan the opportunity to address this, since you're the one that moved that off the consent agenda. Let's have Mr. TJ Strain come up and present this, and then we'll have Ms. Hogan--
Yeah, thank you.
To ask questions or--
Thank you, President Gerard. I just had a few questions for Mr. Strain. And I also just wanted to give a quick moment. I know the meeting's gone a long time, but just to give the board an opportunity to discuss it in an open meeting if they would like. So the instructional materials, I believe it's called My Perspectives. Is that correct? From Savus?
Savus.
Savus. Savus Learning Company. And my understanding is this will be the new ELA for grade seven to twelve.
Correct. And so we're doing an early adoption next year. So when we say early adoption, with our current math adoption in the elementary, we found we have about three hundred teachers who are currently adopting, who adopted the math adoption this year, and then full adoption will be next year. And so we've really liked that format just because it allows us to work through some of those issues. Teachers get their hands on it, and then they become experts, and they're able to give us a lot of feedback. So we've liked how that's worked. And so right now, we have about fourteen of our twenty-nine secondary schools that are wanting to early adopt, either their entire English team or grade level or two of their English team.
Okay, so that was one of my questions, is we're adopting it kind of as a pilot or a little bit more than a pilot?
A little bit more than a pilot. This would be a full nine-year adoption. But this first year would be more of a transitional year where we'd be able to really work with our teachers. Because a lot of times, we just don't know what we don't know. And so we vetted the curriculum, we've gone through it. But still, in the hands of a teacher, we just want to get their feedback to make sure when in application phase that it's really effective and any of those things that we can tweak or change just to make things a little easier for our teachers.
Okay. Because I just wanted to know if you had heard much back? Because I haven't heard anything, so I didn't know if you had gotten much feedback from teachers or the community or what you're--
Yeah, overall, the feedback's been really, really positive. I know Michelle Barney is just-- I want to highlight her efforts in this. She's just done a great job. Unbelievably, she's read every page of every textbook that is going through adoption. She's gone through everything. She knows it. She's looked through it. And she's really been closely connected with our secondary English teachers, especially the ones on the committee, just making sure that if they have concerns, we've been addressing them. And really, we haven't had any concerns. It's all been positive. Our teachers have really liked the integration with Canvas, how it integrates very-- it's the best integration that I've seen. And it just works really, really smoothly. And so I can't think of any negative or any concerns that have been brought up. Michelle, any thoughts?
Yeah, I don't think so. I think overwhelmingly, teachers are really hungry for things they can do project-based learning with, literacy supports and things like that. So any issues, it's just maybe nervousness that I've heard about things that English teachers are used to doing that we just have to kind of navigate as we move forward. Other than that, it's been wildly positive.
Thank you so much. Could you go over again? Didn't you have to host two open houses on this? Public open houses?
So we had open houses. We didn't have a ton of people there. We've also had the materials available for about the past month. They're still available, and they'll still remain available. Parents are always welcome to come by and look through them. We also have-- one of the things we really liked about Savus was they created a great website for all patrons where they can go in and look at the materials. They can access all teacher editions, student editions. They see everything. And Savus has just been very-- it's been really impressive how open they've been with us and just streamlining that approach.
Okay. Any other questions?
I just have one more. Then I'll be done, I promise.
No, you're fine. You're fine.
Just, I was wondering if you could talk just a little bit about how this program is supposed to help with the proficiency in reading that we want to raise up in our district?
Yeah, there's a couple of things, I think, with that. First, this year, we've really seen some great benefits from using the CAPDSS in the secondary world. So first of all, that's been one of the best things that we've done. We've seen-- CAPDSS is an assessment where we can give to all students in the secondary level, and we can drill down as to what their needs are in that language comprehension piece, but also the word recognition piece. So that's been really helpful to be able to target students, determine what needs they have, and then be able to place them appropriately with their supports. This is going to help us continue to-- the great work that we're seeing in the elementary with CKLA, all founded on the science of reading, where students are learning that language comprehension and also that word recognition, but it's not taught in isolation. And that's the thing that we really want to continue to reinforce, that historically, sometimes those skills have been taught in isolation, where it's a grammar day, and then you go from a grammar exercise to a comprehension exercise, to a writing exercise. That's just not how we live our lives. We don't write for a minute and then try to comprehend for a minute. We need to teach those skills together. And so that's part of that integrated approach that we're seeing great success in the elementary side that we want to continue in that secondary side. So Savus, My Perspectives is deeply ingrained in that. All of those skills are taught not in isolation, they're integrated. And then we want to continue to use that data. We're hoping that as we continue to work through CKLA, that we also see that improvement piece move into the junior high school, right? So we should see fewer students entering junior high in that lower range. We'll always have some students there. That's why we have CAPDSS to be able to assess those areas